Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Planning Commission for the City of Everett. It's March 17th, St. Patrick's Day, 2015. And we do have a revised agenda, so we have two items now for our discussion tonight. But before we get into that, we'll take roll call. Commissioner Tisdale?
Here.
Commissioner Jordison?
Here.
Commissioner Adams?
Here.
Commissioner Sand?
Here.
Commissioner Solson?
Here.
Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Chair Stewart? And next is approval of minutes, and these are minutes from our March 3 meeting. Has the commissioner had an opportunity to review the minutes? And does anybody have any comments or changes? And if not, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Sand?
Yes.
Commissioner Solson?
I'd like to abstain, please.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Stewart? All right, and now we are moving along to reports from Planning Commission members. So we'll start down with Commissioner Tisdale.
Nothing to report.
No report. No report.
No report.
No report.
No report for me either.
I don't have a report either. We're meeting week after week, so we don't have a lot of time between our meetings to have new things to report. We're just kind of recovering, I guess, for the next meeting. So do staff have any comments right now?
I'd like to reserve a little time at the end of the meeting for some comments, but other than that, no comments.
Okay. And this is a chance for any members of the public in attendance who would like to speak about something that's not on our agenda for tonight. You could approach the podium. Seeing no takers, although a gentleman just arrived. This is an opportunity for citizen comments if you do have a comment. So I think we'll go ahead and start with our item number one. And this is a continuation from our last week's public hearing. It's a hearing to amend ordinance number 3380-14 as amended, with a staff memo that is dated March 16. And this would approve a change in the location of student housing for the Trinity Lutheran College. And it would shift the location to the west side of the 2600 block of Rockefeller Avenue with the required off-street parking in an off-site location. So staff?
Thank you, Alan Giffen, Planning Director. This is a continued public hearing from last week. At last week's meeting, the Planning Commission continued the item until this week in order to address some questions about disabled parking. But before I get into the response, I just wanted, for the benefit of the audience, people who may not have been following this, to remind and remind the commission that the locations on the map that you see of the three different or four different shades, the Trinity Lutheran College campus is located here on the southwest corner of California and Wetmore. Its parking garage, also owned by Trinity, is located across the street between Wetmore and Rockefeller on the south side of California Street. The original location that had been approved under ordinance 3380 was at the southwest corner of Oaks in California, about a block west of the parking garage. And all of the parking for that version of the housing plan was approved in that parking garage block to the east, or the west, excuse me. That real estate transaction for this property was unsuccessful, fell through, and so now Trinity has acquired or is in the process of acquiring this property located in the 2600 block of Rockefeller that is about a block and a half north of the location of the parking garage. The proposal is to build approximately 56, 58 student housing rooms and provide all of the off-street parking within the parking garage. There's plenty of capacity within this parking garage, over 400 parking stalls, and not all of it is utilized by on a commercial basis by tenants. It is available to the public. And so the proposal we discussed last week, we talked quite a bit about what would be done if there is a need for a disabled parking stall. And we continued the hearing in order to allow staff to go back and research. I'm not the expert on disabled parking requirements, and so I had the opportunity to talk with our building official and our traffic engineering department, the staff member for which was planning to be here tonight, but came down sick. But I think I can report everything that we discussed as it pertains to the question. So in the short answer to the question about requiring, is disabled parking required onsite? Is no, if there is no required parking provided onsite. The city's code does require a proportion of how the parking that is required for any use to be for accessible for disabled drivers or passengers. But if that parking is not provided onsite, then there's not a requirement for the disabled parking to be provided onsite. If it's provided off-site, as is proposed with this application, then that proportion of the parking that is required would have to be provided in that off-site location as well. And so under the ratio of parking spaces based on the number of rooms in the proposed student housing building, there would be a requirement for two disabled parking spaces. In this particular case, should the location of the parking be approved off-site, then the code would not require any disabled parking to be provided onsite or in proximity to the building. That, as we discussed last week, however, is not necessarily, doesn't limit the Planning Commission's options in making recommendations to the city council. On-street disabled parking, we talked a little bit about that last week. And as I thought was the case, was confirmed by the Traffic Engineering Division, they can provide for off, excuse me, on-street parking for disabled, but it cannot be reserved for a specific individual. It just usually when somebody requests that based on a need and situation where they can't provide for that on their own property due to perhaps great differences between an alley, if that's where their parking is located and the entrance to their building, the City Engineering Department will allow for the use of on-street disabled parking. And so that is an option. When we were talking about this last week also, Trinity had reported that they do not currently have any disabled students attending the college or residing in any of the leased student housing elsewhere in the downtown. And so since the public hearing was continued, I wanted to provide that information back to you, but also wanted to allow the public to comment on this. But before doing so, would encourage you to ask any questions you may have of me or talk about options if you wish. But our recommendation is to approve the location for the student housing as shown on the earlier map with the parking, the required off-street parking to be located in the Trinity Lutheran College parking garage. So approve that change in the housing location, change in the approximate number of units. The previous housing that was proposed in the other location was going to be approximately 100 rooms. And so we changed that approximate number to 56 or 58. And then we've added to your resolution from the one that you saw last week, the one that was emailed to you yesterday, that if a need arises for disabled parking, that it should be provided onsite if space is available. And the current plan would cover the entire site, so if required onsite, it would certainly require a change to the plan that Coes Development and Trinity are contemplating. Or if it was necessary to provide it on an abutting site, if agreed to by neighbors, and with also adequate access between the parking space and the entrance to the building. Or, and these are not in any priority, on-street if approved by the city engineer, again with access from the street parking space to the building. So that is what we have learned in further discussions with city staff, other city staff members, and our recommendation has been revised accordingly. So unless you have questions for me, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. So any questions from the commission?
Cat, is the new handout have that revised language? Because that language is not in the handout that was sent out by email.
The resolution?
He's talking about the staff report.
No, the resolution.
Oh, the resolution.
The resolution.
So the March 16 dated memorandum does have it page five in red, strikeout, or I mean, underlined. I'd be happy to share my copy. You could pass that down. I've already read it. You could give that to Commissioner Sand. So next page. So while Commissioner Sand is reviewing that language, although that's what Planning Director Giffen just read what was there. So we have that in the record. Are there questions about this from the commission? Commissioner Sand?
Yeah, one question would be, with the proposed language, what would trigger the requirement? Because it seems to me it says if needed, there would be steps to be taken. Who determines when the if needed arises?
Well, that would be determined or triggered by a resident bringing it to our attention or Trinity Lutheran College bringing it to our attention. And so I'm sure they want, the college would like to accommodate their students if they have that need. And so it would really be put upon the college as the building owner to request that. But if an individual tenant within the building came to the city, that's another way.
Well, in practical sense, if it's dependent upon a resident making the request or a prospective resident making requests, it sounds like the option for onsite is not there because the building will be constructed and is apparently proposed to cover the entire site, so that's not available. And on abutting sites, we heard testimony before that from the church that their parking lot is pretty full already, and they have more of a demand than they have available for that type of parking space. So it looks like that option, it really isn't available. So it sounds like the only practical option that would be available after the building is up and operational would be the third option.
That's most likely to be the case, yes.
Other comments? Commissioner Solson?
The way I read the language of item number 10, which is what we're speaking of, it does pretty clearly, in my mind, put the burden of notification on Trinity Lutheran College, followed by the word shall, contact the city engineer and so forth. So I think that clearly outlines the responsibility of the college to notify the traffic engineer or city engineer if they need, they need a disabled space.
Commissioner Jordison?
You know, I wondered if there was anything in the state or federal regulations regarding Americans with Disabilities Act that would apply here. And I haven't seen anywhere myself that would, you know, dictate that there should be some kind of accessible parking. A building could be accessible without having any parking. So, you know, I'm completely satisfied that it meets all the criteria and the spirit of Americans with Disabilities Act. And as far as I'm concerned, should we exceed that and somehow, I suppose if there is a student who had a disability who couldn't live there and wanted to live there, it would be incumbent upon Trinity Lutheran to provide that capability. And if they had a van that they needed to park, you know, then it would come about possibly. But it seems to me that they've satisfied all the regulations and all the requirements. And unless we decided to add to those regulations and requirements, it seems that it's all completely legal and appropriate. And I wouldn't, I can't, I can't imagine adding to those restrictions or those regulations and putting the burden of actually, that would exceed those state and federal regulations. That's my feeling about it.
Other comments? Commissioner Adams?
First want to start my comments by, I appreciate what the college is doing in town. Obviously, very important institution. I think what you bring to the community is huge. I have a problem, though, with the idea that you don't have any disabled students because to me, that doesn't really address the issue. It's short-sighted from my perspective because we're going to have 53 units, or 58 units, where families are going to become visiting their sons, daughters, cousins. I have an aunt and uncle with polio. I have a grandmother that needs a pass. When they come to visit, I can't believe that we're going to expect them to park two and a half blocks away in a parking garage. And I understand the primary need is the student, but I think we also have secondary needs that are part of this. So from my perspective, I appreciate the city looking at this. I think it's an important issue, and I appreciate Commissioner Sand bringing it up last time. I think the middle ground here, though, is the city, if this is such an important project for the city to push forward, which I think it is, that the city require of itself that we go ahead now and actually designate two parking spots in front of the building as handicapped or accessible, so that way we can help meet this need. And I completely agree. I think the recommendation from the staff is good, but two of them are probably not practical. And so we're left with onsite parking for accessibility purposes. So my feeling is that this is really an issue that we've created ourselves because we've allowed parking to be this far away from 58 units of housing. So it's not a matter of whether it meets ADA, it's a matter of whether the modification of what is permitted here, you know, having onsite parking for each of the units, having that so far away, what are we going to do to make sure that people with disabilities have access to the building? So I think from my perspective, there's plenty of middle ground to be reached here. But realistically, I'd like to see something on the street now, so that way when families show up, there's some sort of accessible parking.
Any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Solson?
If that's not problematic for the city engineer, I would support that. And just on a casual observance of that block of parking, I'm not looking at it on a Sunday morning, granted. So it's not influenced by the needs of the church. But during weekdays, that west side is very often almost, I would say, 80% absent of cars. And so there seems to be a lot of space available for, you know, the casual need for access to the building. So taking two spots and marking them as disabled, I would think would work well. And I would just also add, you know, the issue of this particular project is experimental. And because we have separated the parking from the actual building. And so it's, I think we should support the project going forward as best we can, maybe with the two spots on the street. And then prior to adopting any other standards for microhousing or changing multifamily parking requirements, we ought to look at this more as a citywide policy rather than just on this particular project. Thank you.
Other comments?
Thank you. I would agree with Commissioner Adams on providing the ADA stalls out in front of the proposed student housing. Where it was located previously, there wasn't a major arterial to cross. And to cross Everett Avenue to get to the school and to the parking garage and all that to the housing is more burdensome to a person with disabilities or anything like that. So I think if we're moving locations and moving it so far away and across such a major arterial, I think that it would be very beneficial to the students and their guests.
I guess I've got a question. On the west side of the property, is that an alley that is there?
Yes.
Is there room in the alley for parking, or is it too narrow for?
It would be too narrow for putting it entirely within the alley. If there was room at the back of the lot for something, that might be another story. But as proposed, the building, as currently designed, is going to cover the lot 100%.
And is staff aware on that 2600 block of Rockefeller if there is any of these dedicated disabled parking spaces in the city right of way now?
That's a good question. I don't have a certain answer. My impression was that there was not, but I could be wrong. There may be some in front of the church, but I don't have a complete answer on that one.
And I'm wondering if it's being suggested by commissioners, the two disabled parking spaces because of the staff report that says that that is the number that would be required based on the number of proposed rooms in the student housing. Is that why it's two as opposed to one handicap parking spot?
I think you could use a number of ways to reason it. From my perspective, if I recall correctly, there are four disabled rooms within the facility proposed currently. Is that correct, Alan?
I do not know that.
Okay, I think we learned that at the last public hearing. So I was thinking having two, because we had four, would at least provide some minimal level to those four rooms and then also the visitors and guests to the facility, so.
Okay. So are there any other questions?
We heard from the church last time that parking was an issue, and I'm like Michelle. I've traveled that, but I've not done it on Sunday. Is that, those additional stalls going to help or hurt the church parking? I understand it's off-street.
I think public comment tonight may answer that question. I don't have an answer.
I just, I mean, I haul my mother around four days a week, and she's disabled. And creating stalls that can't be used or won't be used if there isn't a population there, I'm all for, let's do it if it's needed. But your relatives are probably same as my experiences. They're hard to find.
Okay. So should we open the public hearing? And it might give us an opportunity to hear from representatives from Trinity Lutheran Church as well as anybody else who would like to speak on this? Okay. All right, so now's an opportunity. Let's see, I have, I don't have anybody that's signed up to speak on this item if you would like to. There are these half-sheets on the table over there. Please fill that out. So I guess I would ask, would a representative from Trinity Lutheran Church want to address us? Or the church, are you? Or feel free to.
I'm from the United Church of Christ.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record?
My name is Charles Hersheiser, H-E-R-S-H-I-S-E-R. I live in, on 81st Place in Marysville. I am the chairman of the Trustees Committee of the United Church of Christ of Everett. And as I said last week, we have a number of disabled people in our congregation. We have three spots in our parking lot that's next to the church that are designated, although some of the signs got torn down. But I might also add, we have two members that attend church in motorized wheelchairs, and they come from down on Broadway. Someplace they live in, some housing down there. And they come through all those intersections currently with seeming no problem. They get to church on time and come to Bible study on Tuesdays. So, but the on-street parking is used mostly in the evenings when we have meetings. We have various 12-step meetings in the church, and some of them are quite well-attended. On Sundays also, the, most of the on-street parking is taken up. But the rest of the time, it's, as has been mentioned, there's maybe three or four cars in there most of the time in the daytime, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Anybody else care to speak on this item? Would the Planning Commission want to hear from, yes? So your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Christian Page. I'm a current resident of the Trinity Lutheran College Apartments, 2628 Hoyt Avenue, Apartment 6, to be exact. And I just came here personally to just stress the importance of the apartments to the student body. I currently serve as the president of the student body. And we, I mean, personally, just as a school, the students there love Everett. We love the city. I mean, from the bottom of, I mean, our souls at that point. Myself personally, I came from Tacoma, which is a community that's not much different. And, you know, just really fell in love with what's here. I've volunteered for the Minority Achievers Program. I've been a part of Avid programs in the high schools. I mean, just all over. And recently, we've started a mentoring initiative for students at Sequoia High School. We've just been all over the community, and I'm personally just one of 200 personal soldiers who want to make this community a better place. And what this housing would do for us personally is to just create a space where, you know, we can feel at home, where we're closer to the parts of the city that we're in contact with. A lot of our students volunteer, work at the YMCA, and they're in the Minority Achievers Program. They're in the teen center. Their front desk there to greet you. We're a lot of the presence of, you know, young people who are trying to make a difference in this community, and this housing would be something great for us.
Thank you.
Hello again. John Reed, President of Trinity. I wanted just to comment on a few things. First of all, I agree with the comment that just because we don't have disabled students now isn't at all a reason why we're not working hard to address this, so I just wanted to agree with that comment. We do, in a regular process, need to ask students, we do as a regular part of our admission process, do they have disabilities that we need to accommodate as part of their admission to the college? And they have an obligation to let us know what those, to their ability to know what those disabilities are, so we can accommodate them, whether it's hearing or site or whatever. So those are issues that we need to address. So just in general, if a student were to apply for admission and would need to have disability accommodations for housing, we would know that before we even brought them into the community. We've talked about this somewhat, just in general, even where we're located currently in our housing, that in that case, we may have to work with a student to find better, a better situation than our current housing. And I think even though we have 11 disabled parking spots two blocks away, if that's not going to work for that student or families, that would be something we would want an ongoing basis kind of consider. For the most part, just information from our experience in five years, this people, the guests who seem to come to the campus, park in the parking garage, and most of the activities seem to be at the campus center. So we have disabled parking in the parking garage, and they're coming across a block, you know, just across the street from the parking garage to be involved in events and such. Doesn't mean they're not visiting their center daughters in our housing up the street. But for the most part, they seem to kind of come and congregate around the building, so I wanted to comment about that as well. I'd be glad to ask her any questions that you might have, just from my perspective on this.
Any questions? Thank you.
Kathy Reynus, Co-Development. I'll keep my comments just very brief. First of all, a great deal of respect for the planning commission for raising the issue of ADA compliance. It just speaks very highly of you as leaders of our community. The only thing I wanted to add as part of our discussions with Director, we have committed as part of the construction process to put curb cuts in along the sidewalk in anticipation of ever needing to convert those spots along the street to handicap parking. And did it based on a future need as opposed to today, with the thought that it gave us flexibility in the future. If you look, there's two parking lots on the other side of the alley that could be an option in the future. You've got the parking lot next door that could be an option in the future. So didn't want to be specific to on-street parking, just to keep that as a flexible alternative, which is why we appreciated the way the original resolution was written, is it provided you flexibility in the future as it related to the on-street parking. So, but we're going to put the curb cuts in regardless.
Okay. And just so I understand what you were saying, so condition number 10, which is in our proposed resolution tonight, you are in support of that?
Yes.
And then are the curb cuts mentioned in here?
Curb cuts are not mentioned in here. And I believe, just to clarify, that Kathy, if you, if you wouldn't mind coming back to the question, when you say curb cuts, you're talking about for pedestrian or wheelchair access and not vehicles?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. So anybody else care to address this item tonight? If not, then do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison? Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Sand?
Yes.
Commissioner Sosin?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
All right. So we have the staff report dated March 16th. And then attached to that is a draft resolution, two pages. And then there is the exhibit, which is called Compilation of the Requirements of Ordinance Number 3380-14 as amended by Ordinance Number 3440-14. And that consists of four pages of underlying, of text with some portions underlined and striked out. So in our resolution, we would resolve that the planning commission recommends that the city council approve an amendment to Ordinance Number 3380-14 as amended by Ordinance Number 3440-14, as indicated in then Exhibit 1, which are the requirements. So any comments on that? Commissioner Sosin?
Chair Stewart. I just wanted to ask a question. On page three of Exhibit 1, where we reference the number of students, number of units in the project, it reads 56. And on the next page, on page four, it reads 58. And I didn't know if that was just, if we want to leave it that way, or if we want to make it the same on both pages?
You notice that both of those numbers are preceded by the word approximately?
Uh-huh, I did.
I'm not sure. I think I've heard 56 and 58 from the proponents, and I don't know the number. And maybe somebody can clarify that?
58 would be safe. Are still in design.
Yeah. That's why we've said approximately, because we recognize the design stage that they're in. But we'll just use 58 for now, if that pleases the commission.
Or we can leave it the way it is, too. That, I just wanted to ask the question.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Sand?
Alan, I would imagine that the process is pretty simple to put up a sign for restricted parking along the street. But is there a special process to make that request and for that to take place? Or is it something that can be handled rather quickly?
It's something that can be handled rather quickly. I think in this design stage, as suggested by Ms. Reynus a moment ago, if they are going to, they are going to have to rebuild the full furniture improvements in front of their building, that they could design something that would accommodate the handicap access. And I think in the conversations that we had with the traffic engineer, that would be probably something that they would support and readily approve.
It seems to me that, I guess I'll call it a respectful way of handling this, would be to have at least one stall out there available from the very beginning, and an understanding that it may be that you would add an additional handicap accessible stall as a need might arise. But you will, I think you should at least have one for those visitors who come about. I mean, I go see my grandkids at colleges, I'm going to go to the dorm. I'm going to check them out, so. You know, you want to check that out, so.
Other comments? Commissioner Holland?
Alan, I thought I read in here before that Trinity was going to be looking at other ADA accessibility on the corners on the way to the school. Is that, is that correct? And they're committed to make improvements to meet current standards if they find that they're currently under standard to, from, from the new student housing location to the, to the college? Is that correct?
Right. Both to the garage and to the college.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, that's a commitment that they have made in written materials.
Commissioner Adams?
Alan, if, whether it's one or two, if we were going to recommend that the city proactively provide a spot or two spots out front, where would we put that in the resolution? Would you want it in the resolution, or would we actually go to the Exhibit 1, and maybe at the end of Part 10 there and say something?
Yeah, I would recommend that we add to that condition number 10 in Exhibit 1. And don't have the exact wording, but if you'll allow me the, I guess the discretion or the trust to write something up that would state at least a minimum of one to be provided with the new building and with the potential for an additional disabled parking space should the need arise at the request or responsibility of Trinity to initiate that request. Something along those lines. And then we could make sure that that works with the traffic engineering department or division. And if we have any issues that we need to bring back to the commission, we would do so at a future meeting. But I think that would probably be sufficient, based on my conversations with traffic engineer.
Okay.
Other comments? Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion? If you're ready?
Okay. Just wanted to make sure you, okay. So I struggle whether it's one or two. I mean, from my perspective, I like the idea of two, because to me, I think it shows more of a commitment by the part of the city of Everett that we're going to be proactive. We're obviously separating the parking garage from the units, the 58 units. I like the number two. I would be, if someone, if you don't support for two, I'm happy to support one, obviously. But I think I'm going to make my motion based on two. And I would propose that we allow the planning director discretion, but ask that he provide language into, is it Exhibit 1, that provides that the city of Everett will proactively provide, upon the opening of the building, two accessible parking stalls in front of the building?
Okay. Understood.
And that's your motion? Do I hear a second? Go ahead.
A second.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Sand?
Yes.
Commissioner Sosin?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Okay. So that concludes item number one for tonight. Item number two is a public workshop to discuss potential amendments to the interim land use regulations for recreational marijuana under State Initiative 502.
Good evening. Alan Giffen, Planning Director. This is a workshop, another workshop, as a follow-up to our last workshop, which was on February 10th, at which we discussed a number of things related to I-502 and that both the city's current interim regulations. And the commission had some additional questions that we can talk about tonight. But as a reminder, the purpose of the public workshops is for the city planning commission, staff, and public to be involved, carry out the work program that was identified in the ordinance that established the interim regulations. It's also an educational process for us to learn more about this new type of business as a regulated business in both the production and the retail side, to hear about the public, or from the public, about concerns or impacts and potential changes to the interim regulations. No decision, final decision will be made tonight, but hopefully the commission will give staff further direction to prepare some amendments or give direction about what should or shouldn't be changed in the interim regulations for a future meeting. As the existing regulations, interim regulations expire on July 12th of this year, and the city council has expressed an interest in, when this comes back to them, that the non- or, excuse me, the interim regulations be made non-interim, or no such thing as permanent, I suppose, but at least replace the interim with a more permanent set of regulations on the books. So with the state regulations, the Liquor Control Board has established its regulations to govern how production, processing, and retail uses will work. They do require in the state regulations a 1,000-foot separation from sensitive land uses, and that includes land uses such as schools, parks, recreation centers used by children, childcare centers, public transit centers, libraries, and game arcades. There's, I think, a couple more in there, but that covers the majority of such uses. The state will also allow up to five retail stores in the city of Everett, based on population and how they distribute those throughout Snohomish County. They do not have any limits on the number of production or processing facilities that can locate within the city. There are three tiers of production facilities under the state's regulatory system. The Tier 1 allows up to 2,000 square feet of plant canopy. And for those of you who were able to make the tour of the production facility in the unincorporated part of Snohomish County, that was a Tier 1 facility. For Tier 2 and Tier 3 facilities, the square foot, square footage of canopy allowed under each of those would be 10,000 square feet for Tier 2, and up to 30,000 square feet for a Tier 3. So significantly larger than the Tier 1. Our interim 502, I-502 regulations with respect to retail uses, first of all, medical marijuana stores are not allowed in the city of Everett. But I-502 regulations do allow for retail, and again, up to five stores in the city. And our interim regulations will allow for marijuana retail sales in most zones that allow for retail use. There are a couple of exceptions, that being the B1 zone, for example, or non-conforming retail uses in residential zones. And the C2 ES zone currently is not listed as a zone allowing retail marijuana sales. The city council recently, I skipped over the separation requirement, you're familiar with that, the 2,500-foot separation between retail uses. The city council in the first of the year added some additional regulations on the retail stores that would not allow them on any lot that is either adjacent to a lot containing a residence or upon which is already located a residence that is going to stay. And a few other restrictions with regard to sharing an alley that also provides access to residential uses, or also some separation requirements, some distance between the residential use and a retail store. There are three currently in existence in the city. We're aware of a fourth that is working to make building improvements that has the, won the lottery for the drawing, and will presumably be open in the near future. The fifth licensee was one that was awarded by the state, even though it's in a zone where the city's regulations currently don't allow retail in the C2 ES zone. And we'll talk more about that in a moment. So on this map, you have some fairly larger-scale maps that are easier for you to read than the one that you're looking at on the screen here in your packets, though, that show the colored areas are where retail marijuana sales may occur. You can see three large red circles with a diameter of 5,000 linear feet. That is the 2,500-foot radius around the three existing stores. And within those areas, even though the zoning might allow for retail use, the presence of an existing retail store under 502 would not allow any others within that radius. With regard to production and processing facilities, we do allow under our interim regulations Tier 1 production and processing in industrial and in the A1 agricultural zone, with a minimum 1,000-foot separation from any residential zone. And currently, we have no 502 authorized production and processing facilities in the city. This map shows the areas, the zones in which the production and processing would be allowed. Again, the green areas are the ag zones. The one up at the top of the map is the, actually, the city's water quality treatment plant. So that's really, although in theory, the right zone, it's not available. As you would also surmise, neither would be the Navy Base, which is a large portion of that purple on the west side of the map. Boeing Company owns about 1,000 acres in southwest Everett, where probably are not going to see any production facilities authorized there. But this map does not have the 1,000-foot buffers from residential. Most of the area to the north of the southwest Everett industrial area, to the north and to the east of those, that large area that's got the industrial zone shaded in different colors, would be residential zoning. And so, under the current regulations, there would be a 1,000-foot buffer within which production and processing facilities would not be allowed. At the February 10th public workshop, the commission had asked for some additional information about production and processing jobs, a number of jobs that might be expected from production or processing facilities, and wage information. You'd asked for those maps that I just showed you and that you received in your packet. There was discussion about design standards for the retail uses, and there was a question about parking standard for retail uses. We have proposed, in your packet, some revisions to the interim regulations. One of the, and I'll talk about some of the, maybe I'll go back a moment before we get to those regulations, and talk about information in your packet that responds to some of the questions that were brought up at the February 10th workshop. And what found was difficult to track down was any information about the number of jobs that might be expected in a marijuana production or processing business. We do have a little bit of information in your packet that's provided by representatives or members of the, people affiliated with the industry. or members of the, people affiliated with the industry, media articles that talk about the types of jobs that are an evolving part of this new economy created under the initiative. But there's not really a good inventory of information on the number of jobs you might expect on a production or processing business. These are all new businesses, at least under the I-502 regulations. And so what we speculated in the staff response to the question was that you would probably have different levels of employment based upon the nature of the operation. If you had a, an operation that had a lot of equipment or investment in equipment, automatic watering, feeding, types of production processes, then you would be less labor-intensive. Those that haven't made the upfront investment in equipment would probably have more labor because it'd be a more labor-intensive operation. With regard to processing, we didn't have, find anything that really gave us any good information about number of jobs you might expect in a business, say, in a tier one, tier two, or tier three-type production facility. This is all new stuff for us, and we couldn't find any reliable information. We did provide for you some information that Jamie Curtis Smith had tried to compile and do some number crunching to get a sense for what her thoughts were about it. But again, she was interpolating a lot of data to create some numbers that are on some tables within your packet. But again, these are not numbers that the city has produced or the Liquor Control Board has produced. These are numbers that she has extrapolated just through some of her own thoughts and research. So I'm afraid we didn't have a very precise answer to those questions. The design standards for retail uses, we did propose something in your packet that was based on the Evergreen Way zoning standards, and I can cover those in a little bit more detail when I switch to the regulations. As for parking standards for retail uses, there was a question about that, and our recommendation is to just use the standard that governs retail use within the zoning code without specifying a different standard for marijuana retail stores. So... In your packet, beginning on the third page, under paragraph G, staff proposed amendments to interim regulations. And again, these are proposed for purposes of discussion. We're not asking you to take any action tonight, but give us some feedback, and perhaps we can hear from the public on these items, too. So the first one would be to eliminate the A1 agricultural zone for production and processing. And I'll go back to the map there. On the lower right-hand side of the map, where you see that large green area, that is the A1 zoning in the city, aside from the water pollution control facility up further north. And most of that land is either floodplain or rural residential in character. And so, for example, what is uphill and west of Low Laramo Road is on fairly steep hillside and resembles a more rural area of the county than really a city neighborhood. What we're recommending is to take the production and processing out of the A1 zone as a permitted use. The floodplain, for one, you couldn't build a building in the floodplain anyway, so that would not, would not be practical. And the other parts of the A1 zone are really more residential in character, rural residential in character, that are outside of the floodplain. And so, we felt that that would be a good area to remove from the production and processing uses. What we would also recommend for consideration or discussion is the prohibition on tier two and tier three production processing businesses in the industrial zones. And currently, we do have the requirement for a 1,000-foot buffer between, at least the tier ones that we do allow, and residential zones. Based upon, that 1,000-foot buffer was really based upon probably more concern about odor emanating from a production facility than it was for any other reason. And based upon some of the information that we've learned from air pollution control district requirements and observation of the, at least one production facility, the odor, while it could be an issue with proper technology and air quality permits required on a case-by-case basis, we don't think that that is truly going to be the impact that we felt when we first established the interim regulation. The proposal that we would make would be to allow tier two and tier three production processing facilities in the industrial zones. And so, the large areas that you see on the map that are purple or light blue would be the areas where such a use would be permitted. Or the C2 zone that you see, kind of just south of the downtown area, it's a little bit deeper, more of an aqua color blue on the map, that's the area outside of the Everett Station area zoning, south of 36th Street, we have a little bit of C2 zoning. Not a whole lot left in the city, but that area would be considered industrial. And I want to report for you a conversation that I had with our Economic Development Director today about her concerns on tier two and tier three production facilities. She has commented that she has a difficult time finding decent-sized industrial buildings for some of our targeted businesses that we're trying to recruit or retain or expand in Everett, that being in particular aerospace, electronics, biomed-type of manufacturing. And so, she did have a concern about opening up the industrial zones to a, just not, to an unlimited number of production and processing facilities. And so, she suggested that we might want to consider a limit of sorts, so as not to eat up the inventory of industrial land that we do have with, should we have a land rush because of the lack of production facilities that are allowed in other jurisdictions? And so, she felt a limitation would be something she would like to put up in front of the commission for discussion, so I'm relaying that. Not necessarily a prohibition, but some consideration to limiting that. We took a real conservative approach with our interim regulations, and her thought was to keep it somewhat conservative with regard to the number of production and processing facilities, so that we could see what our experience is before we open up the industrial zoning to a much wider opportunity for production processing. One of the other changes that we would recommend is reducing the 1,000-foot buffer requirement from residential and putting instead a notification requirement that any production or processing business that was located less than 200 feet from a residential zone would be subject to a public notice requirement, where all property owners within that range are, well, be actually within 100, if they're less than 200 feet, we'd have a review process, too, which has 150-foot notification distance, so that any surrounding land uses, whether residential or industrial or commercial, would be notified and be given the opportunity to comment on what they felt or had concerns about potential impacts from such a business, and would give the city the ability, a greater ability to add conditions to any business based upon valid concerns that are raised by the public through that notification process. You do have in your packet, probably just behind the draft changes to the regulations, a couple of emails, the second of which was from Brian Bodge. I believe Brian is here tonight, who represents Globodyne Industries. He has a, an approved license from the state in the C2 ES zone, and he has asked that we add the C2 ES zone as, to the list of zones in which retail uses are allowed. They currently are allowed in the C2 zone. We did not specifically discuss allowing or prohibiting retail uses in the C2 ES zone when we established the interim regulations. I don't think that was a conscious decision to prohibit it during the time that we developed the interim regulations. He has also, on the next bullet point down, recommended that we also, for retail uses, the city council established some regulations that prohibit a retail store on a lot that, or abutting a lot, that has residential use. He has recommended a tweak to that regulation that would make an exception if the city has received written consent from an abutting property owner. In his case, the building that he wants to put his retail business in is a former, or a house. He also owns a property next door which has a house, and so, those are the only houses that are in that immediate vicinity. There are some a little further to the south beyond the 100-foot distance that's been established in the interim regulation. And so, obviously, he would support having the retail store next door to his rental property. Then the last bullet point here, the design standards for the facade of retail stores. What we've recommended, based on the commission's discussion at the February 10th workshop, was to add a section that we had pulled out of our, excuse me, our Evergreen Way zoning standards that would be required, whether or not the retail use was located in the Evergreen Way zone. But it would give a menu of choices for a business owner to select, at least, I think, three of the following, and there are items A through J, where they could choose some design treatments that would encourage a better building facade treatment than, I think, one of our stores in particular has created the concern. And so, these are just straight out of an existing code that we have, and it was easy to create if those are, if there's something more the commission wants, we could add to that as well. So I'll pause there, and let's see. Oh, I won't pause quite yet. This is the map of the C2 Everett Station area zoning. The areas highlighted, I'll use the cursor to trace it for those who might have difficulty reading the colors here, but the boundary is I-5 on the east. Just below Hewitt Avenue, about 100 feet south of Hewitt Avenue is the north end of that C2 Everett Station area zoning. The alley east of Broadway, between Broadway and McDougal, is the westerly boundary of that zone, and 36th Street is the south boundary of that zone. So as Mr. Bodge has requested, this C2 ES zone is shown on the map. His particular property location where he has the license issued by the Liquor Control Board is on Pine Street in between Pine and I-5. So tonight is the public workshop. We encourage you to discuss the potential revisions that we've identified. Maybe there's some more that we haven't that you'd like to talk about. Encourage you to take public comment and provide direction for us. I would anticipate that we would probably bring something back to you for a decision public hearing in May, if not the second meeting in April, probably more likely in May. So with that, I'll pause. That's the end of my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. And I must say, I'm impressed with the amount of work that you have done on this, and it's very clearly laid out, so thanks to staff. So, Commissioner, we do have two people who would like to speak tonight, but we could take, any questions that you might have for staff now, or could anybody have any questions right at this point? Commissioner Sand?
Alan, is there a, an obligation to do something with the interim ordinance? Other than, it can only be interim for a certain length of time, I understand that, but it could be that, an action that the city could take as to adopt the interim ordinance and the standards within it as the permanent?
Correct. The city does have the option of just making the existing regulations permanent without amending them at all. It would just have to take a formal action, acknowledging that that's what they're doing. The city, they, we. So yes, that is possible.
Other questions? So why don't we hear from the two people who have signed up? And if anybody else in the audience would like to address the planning commission tonight on this item, please fill out the half sheet, and we will call you up. So first is Philip Doughty.
Hi, I'm, excuse me, bad allergy season this year. I'm here representing Mojo Rising. The name comes from an old Doors song that some of you might remember. And they are a tier three applicant, and they would like to locate in Everett. They do have access to some property. I want to address jobs first. They would be, by the way, the Liquor Board has all the tier threes down at 21,000 square feet of canopy is their top size right now. That was to address some concerns around the state. It'll go back up to 30,000 at some point in the next year or two. A standard we have always been able to use in the medical marijuana world is about one person per every 1,000 square feet of production area. It more or less averages out that way. Certainly, Mojo Rising's project, it would be 25 to 30 FTEs, probably more bodies than that, because there would be some part-timers and stuff. In the industry right now, even beginning gardeners are getting $15 an hour. That's the baseline in the metro area here. All those little hoop houses you're hearing about out towards Monroe, they're all paying, you know, 21-year-old kids who are working there with no experience. They're all starting at $15 an hour and getting a 25% bonus on top of that. So it's pretty reasonable. Most of the jobs for experienced people are going to be in the $20 to $30 an hour range. To make our project work, in addition to having an allowance for tier threes in the city, it's a unique piece of property. It's in both the M2 and the MS zone. It just runs right through the building. So if we need to add the MS zone to make that work, that would be very helpful. And however you decide to address the current residential buffer, if you find that you need to stay with it the way it is now, I, we would just ask that you have the same kind of flexibility in there that's currently in there for retail uses, for the planning director to sort out, you know, if it's even possible for somebody to get to the facility through 1,000 feet. And in our case, somebody would have to scale a 200-foot cliff, go through a salt marsh, and across two active railroad tracks to get to the building. So there's that. And those things alone would make the project work here. I also work in Olympia, and I wanted to give you a bit of an idea of what's going on down there, because we are coming up to the finish line. The legislature's going to be passing some kind of medical marijuana bill and some kind of 502 fix bill. And kind of the big takeaways for you guys is there is going to be an allowance for the Liquor Board to authorize more stores to deal with medical marijuana. How they're going to address that with each community, I don't quite know. I think they'll be taking input from each government on what they want and don't want. There will be a local tax payout of some kind. How that's going to exactly be shaped and how much it'll be, we'll see after it goes through Ways and Means and Andy Hill's Meat Cutter. And the excise taxes are going to get cut down to 130% retail excise tax. That's where it's all going to be. The way it's structured right now, the city would get 30% of that up to a certain dollar amount, but I don't even know how they're calculating it. It's very complicated. But potentially, you're probably looking at $1 to $5 million a year in tax revenue for the city. you to potentially think about. And by the time you have your next meeting in April, I really hope these have already gone to the governor and been signed, but they might be just getting ready to go there. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Kent Peverly.
I just wanted to make a few comments based on the proposals that Alan has already presented. And I've written down my comments so I can kind of stay on track here. And I'll be glad to give you a copy of them. In regards to allowing the Tier Two and Tier Three production facilities within the city of Everett, it's interesting to note that there is, at the moment, a number of reports about a marijuana glut in the state. And I found seven pages of articles when I Googled it today under Washington Marijuana Glut, most of which have been written since the first of the year. Now, I know that production control is not in your purview. However, I think that for the city, as a matter of policy, if it's in favor of legalization of recreational marijuana, then the city would not want to contribute to overproduction by allowing large facilities within its boundaries. You're setting some people up for failure there, I believe. I keep favoring, I favor keeping the production processing limited to the Tier One only. I'm also not sure that the employment impact of allowing Tier Two and Three would be that significant since in the information you have in your packet and the jobs that are outlined as far as what kind of jobs there are, there's only a few of those that actually apply to the production facilities. A number of those are going to have to be dependent on a broader area. In other words, they're going to be employed working for a number of facilities and not going to be totally dependent upon what's actually being generated here in the city. Regarding the maps that the commission requested and apparently have been provided, I guess, it would have been helpful if some of those maps were posted on the website so that the public could have seen those. I'm still not clear what the appearance would be if you kept that 1,000-foot regulation against, setback between the production facilities and the residential area. I mean, how much area does that impact the city, really? I'd like to see that on a map, you know? Also likewise, and I believe you asked for it already, the impact with the setbacks for the sensitive use areas. Concerning that 1,000-foot setback from sensitive use, land uses, most of these uses involve children and young people under the age of 21. And I think churches should be included in these uses since they also involve children and young people. Because of the vulnerable persons involved, I also recommend that you add addiction treatment centers to that setback. Staff memorandum makes mention of a large number of emails submitted about the church setback issue, but the memorandum didn't discuss why the concern, or why this concern should not be openly considered instead of merely being ignored. I'm talking about the memorandum that you had there in your packet there. And I agree with the previous speaker that there is an effort in the state legislature to rectify the disparities between medical and recreational marijuana rules and laws, the patches of which may generate the need to revisit the city rules concerning these land use regulations. Bill S., I'm sorry, 2SSB 502O seeks to bring medical marijuana under the jurisdiction of recreational marijuana rules and is advancing the fastest, having passed both the Senate and the House Committee on Healthcare and Wellness Committee with amendments. And that just happened Friday. No doubt, something will pass out of the legislature and be signed into law. One of the items in the proposed legislation allows the dispensing of medical marijuana by retail outlets when they have an endorsement to their state license and they meet other requirements. That's just one of the number of changes that we'll probably be faced with. And since you have until after the legislature endearns, before the city needs to make a decision because of the expiration of your interim ordinance, I recommend you not finalize this report until you know exactly where the legislature stands on that whole issue. So thank you.
Thank you. And if you do have written comments, thank you. All right. Next, we'll hear from Alan Poole.
I spoke last time, Everett, Washington. I would again appeal to the commission to be as restrictive as possible without going into any of the details about what's been presented on the different zoning requirements, just pretty much continuing what, or to repeat what I said the last time I testified, with a long-term view to having the full city council do as other municipalities and Snohomish County and throughout the state have done and disallow these establishments within city limits, whether they're retail outlets or medical marijuana or grow establishments. At the most, one thing I do want to mention, at the most recent meeting that I was at of this commission, which I believe was February the 10th, it was stated that real harm would need to be demonstrated and that kind of left me concerned. I would want to confront that criteria that I have to demonstrate harm in order to say why I want a change made, but I will take that as, and then try to answer some of those. I guess, and just very quickly through a few points, as quick as I can do this without rushing too much, is harm done by marijuana use? Answer, that is yes medically. And the answer is, or question next, how long does it take? Answer, about the same as cigarettes, about 10 seconds. And the long-term use is harmful to health for any of the list of proven issues. Is that something that we want to introduce with the long-term medical costs, even under the best of circumstances of responsible use by consenting adults, whatever kind of criteria you want to put on that? I mentioned last time, I want to reiterate quickly about the economic damage. That's short and long terms. I mentioned before, there is at least one group of potential industry investors that I know of looking at property in northern Snohomish County to invest. And as part of their visit, they toured Seattle and were not at all impressed with the increased availability and open use of marijuana in downtown Seattle compared to before the passage of I-502. It might be legal per I-502. We're not arguing that. That's what the vote says. But employers, potential investors and employers can and still do screen for drug use. I-502 does not prohibit them from doing that. Or they just don't invest here to begin with. I just don't, in property values were mentioned earlier, I just don't think it's in Everett's long-term best interests. And many comments have been made in the media, informally, not a formal report, that a lot of families no longer take their children to downtown Seattle because of the openness of the use down there. It may be illegal what they're doing, we're not going to argue that. But the fact that it's legal, the police have taken a lower emphasis on enforcing the existing laws. So it's, many families no longer consider downtown Seattle to be family-friendly. I don't think that's what we want for the city of Everett. I would also mention, you can visit any number of establishments that treat people for drug use and so forth. You can start with Everett Gospel Mission. You'll get a fill of what drug use can do. Yes, I know, it's been mentioned before, well, we have the problems with drinking. I know that. I'm very familiar with people on both sides of that, firsthand, secondhand, thirdhand and so forth. But we're not seeking to add another group of problem people into our community that we're going to have to deal with. You ask any drug user how they got started on stuff that's more serious than marijuana, I think you're going to find the large majority of them said they got started with marijuana. And now, I would agree that the responsible use has been proposed by these retail establishments, that's fine. The problem is, is that it legitimizes, it kind of mainstreams the use or the culture of our society into accepting it and then it's, then the use becomes more widespread. And I don't think I need to elaborate on that. Very quickly, just a couple more points. The idea was put forth and very forcefully by advocates of the marijuana industry that availability of legal marijuana would reduce and eventually eliminate the black market and the types of marijuana that maybe not be grown in the best of circumstances with poisons or whatever, that might be toxic compared to the untoxic marijuana. And that would eventually eliminate the black market. I'm going to have to confront that head-on. I am still in regular contact, I've been in contact since the last meeting here, with a number of marijuana users that I know. And all have said, everyone and without exception, that their procurement and use habits are not going to change. They have not changed and they will not change in the future based on the availability of legal marijuana. And also, the concern was raised at the last meeting about high school students. Well, that doesn't really fit into the marijuana stores because I presume these people are going to be responsible enough if they said they're going to very carefully card everybody that comes in. High school students won't be buying there. They're still going to get it the same places they do before. We don't need a society where it's, where this marijuana use is mainstreamed to where it's more acceptable than it already is. And the last thing I want to mention, just by way of illustration, kind of going with the point I made before, is that the Obama administration at the national level, without any basis on a law passed by Congress, took it on themselves to tell Indian reservations, and I would more properly call them Native Americans, that they had a green light to do as they wished regarding marijuana use. And that the federal government would not step in and try to enforce federal marijuana laws on a sovereign Native American reservation. Now, what has been the reaction to that? That was a couple of months ago, I believe, two, three months ago. So far, the majority of the leaders of those reservations have said, no way. We already have enough problems on our reservation with substance abuse. We don't need to add another dimension. We don't need to add another problem to one that we already have, i.e. drinking, and, which is what I mentioned before. So I just want to wrap up and say, I would strongly urge you, like I mentioned at the beginning, to restrict as much as you can with whatever the lawyer says is permissible. The proliferation of these establishments with a view to doing as other communities here, very close by to us, have done and eliminate their presence. And very frankly, I really, as I like many others, I'm very reluctant to be dragged along into being part of a social experiment. Thank you.
Next, Brian Bodge.
My name is Brian Bodge. I live in Breyer. I'd just like to give my support to the planning director's recommendations. I think that, I think that the, I guess in response to some of the comments that were made, I think that the continued prohibition to continue, yeah, to continue the prohibition of marijuana is, has been an abysmal failure. I think that we had a vote on this, we had a debate. To cast aspersions on people that happen to smoke marijuana or to use it as problem people, I think just perpetuates the, perpetuates a problem, perpetuates a perception about marijuana that I think just isn't true. I'd also like to mention that I think there was some questions about the Holiday Inn. In my particular case, the property next to it, I have reached out to the Holiday Inn or to the owners, the governing members, Tommy Liu and Wei Lin of Wapo Investments. They haven't contacted me back, but I have given them my contact information and given them the opportunity to give me their comments or input or feedback about my operations or my intentions on that site. And if there's, if you have any other questions, feel free.
Thank you. Dennis Dutter.
First off, I'd like to say, I previously submitted some paperwork on the C2ES zoning, not to allow the marijuana retail store in that particular area because closing up where there is some places where there shouldn't be or currently is not in zone. And there's all these other places that are still available. The licensee has the responsibility of coming into their particular zone that's been established prior to their getting a license. And therefore, they're coming in and challenging another zoning change for their convenience. As an example, in Pierce County, they have issued a cease and desist order on a recreational marijuana store that is not in a proper zoning area, which was defied by opening because marijuana, medical marijuana operates in the area. So the concerns are, where will medical marijuana stand in the future? That has to dictate how recreation will evolve. And if medical marijuana goes regulated, where they're going to fit in too. And you heard the potential of more than the five that we have licensed, proposed license at this particular time. Another issue is, we're getting a lot of complaints, or I've been getting complaints from people, apartment tenants, and they're complaining about odor issues. They said they can't open up their doors to their decks or sit out on their decks because their neighbors on maybe either side of them are smoking their marijuana and it's drifting into their apartments. We're also, also had a particular parent that lived above a place that seemed to become a party house every weekend, and they actually moved out for the sake of their children, which was under one years of age and about two years of age because the odors actually drifted into their apartments. And the apartment managers hadn't taken action soon enough to try and take care of that particular concern. So they basically had to move. So it, and then talking to the police, they're not, they won't enforce an odor complaint. So there's some issues with what I consider health with some of this. So there's concerns, I'm not against the recreational marijuana, I'm not against medical marijuana, I'm for medical marijuana, but we still have to proceed with this with some caution until the legislature really puts something down that we can really work with. So that's my biggest concern.
Okay. Those are all the, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. So those are all the people that have signed up to speak to us tonight. So we'll turn it back to the commission if you've got any questions. On this topic, staff has asked if, in Section G in particular, the proposed amendments, the topics that they have provided us additional information on, if they're, if this is addressing what we had asked for before, and then also if there are some other aspects that we need further information on.
Just, you know, you're obviously becoming, even though this is unknown territory, you're obviously becoming more informed as, and it's reflected in the directions that we're seeing here. I think that pretty much everything that I've seen here is, you know, seems to be very practical, you know, and pragmatic. So, you know, that's just a comment that I have, is that our efforts to sort of regulate this seem to be evolving. That's a compliment, if you didn't know.
Any other comments? Or compliments?
I would like to tackle the issue of the Tier Two and Tier Three production and processing, vis a vis the lack of real information about job, numbers of jobs, job salaries, job densities and so forth. I am struggling personally with whether this allowing Tier Two or Tier Three production or processing is in the best long-term interests of the city because it isn't the best or highest use. use of the land. And we are the largest aerospace cluster in the world. A lot of people don't know that. But we don't have enough land to accommodate those industries' growth and the other new technologies that are moving in as part of the new manufacturing process that Boeing's undertaken with their new wing. Similarly, with biotech, we have, again, a very large industry cluster that is centered here in the Puget Sound area and also in Everett. We're talking about family wage salaries and high numbers of jobs, office buildings, research facilities, engineering, all sorts of more high-tech positions. And though this, you know, one person per 1,000 square feet of production canopy may sound convincing, it's still, as compared to those other industry sectors, much, much lower. And so, I would like to center at least part of our discussion about tailoring any changes that we make to the interim regs on that discussion, that centerpiece. And because we don't have available data and we don't know really what the employment numbers are going to look like, I, in the best and long-term interests of the city, I personally would hold the opinion of being very conservative and somewhat miserly with the industrial land base that we still have. And I guess if I were going to speak to the rest of that issue, I would not go forward entertaining Tier Two and Tier Three processing and growing operations within the city limits. To me, that is a function of farming and might be better done in a different environment than in an urban environment. So, that, to me, is the biggest issue. I do have comments on some of the other proposed changes, but I'm willing to wait and see how they come up in conversation. And I'd love anybody else's feedback on this particular issue of Tier Two and Tier Three.
Other comments? Commissioner Holland?
Thank you. I would agree that, you know, once you adopt regulations, you can't take them away. So, a conservative approach is probably the best approach. But I do have some questions for Allen, mainly about the mapping. And I guess, so the economic development team had cautioned us about how much square footage we would allow or putting a cap on it, without having the 1,000-foot separation map for these producer-processers. In your best opinion, is that 1,000-foot with, you know, you had the areas up north like the Navy Station and then the City of Everett's property for the wastewater treatment plant and all that. Does the 1,000-foot buffer kill most of the potential for producer-processers in the city? Because I hate to see us just adopt something. I know we're moving towards the recommendation is the 200-foot, but is the 1,000-foot pretty much killing it so it doesn't allow it anyway, I guess?
Alan Giffen, planning staff. On the properties up at the north end of the city, the buffers really don't have much effect because, for example, on the north side of the Snohomish River there in between Marysville and Everett, that is far enough removed from any residential zoning that it has zero impact on those properties. A lot of those are larger industrial parcels, heavy manufacturing uses, for example, and just a whole variety of things from lumber mills to composting operation to boat dry storage and a number of bark-type processing operations themselves. The areas along the river, you can see from about the US2, just below the city's wastewater treatment plant that's in the green shade there, just below that, there's a large industrial area that 1,000-foot, as opposed to a lower standard, would probably not take much, really hardly have any impact on that area. A little bit further to the north, the purple shaded area is owned by the Port of Everett. I don't think that land is going to be generally available for a production or processing facility, nor would anything in the vicinity of the Navy Base, obviously, or the Port of Everett-owned properties on the waterfront. So, we're really talking about, for the most part, industrial buildings or industrial properties in the southwest Everett area now. The 1,000-foot buffer there still leaves a significant number of parcels and acres in that area available. It doesn't eliminate very much of that land with the 1,000-foot buffer. And of course, reducing that 200-foot for notification purposes and not prohibition adds a bit more to the potential inventory of properties that would be available for those uses.
Thank you.
Other comments? Questions?
I just have a comment. No, you absolutely can undo them after you, you can make regulations and then you can undo the regulations. Nothing is permanent, even though we call, even if we take the interim distinction off these and call them the permanent regulations, we can still go back and change permanent regulations. I mean, it's just a matter of how you deal with it, you know? And if it becomes a problem, you can always go back and revisit it. So, I don't agree that it's going to get away from us and we'll never, you know, we're letting go of the reins and it's just going to run wild after that. I just don't, I don't accept that. I also, I have to say, although it would be great if high-tech R&amp;D and aerospace would come flocking to Everett, but, you know, and there's a lot of support industries around Boeing, but, you know, I mean, I don't know if it's topped out, but there's still a lot of empty buildings. And so, you know, if I had an empty building with 30,000, 40,000, 50,000 square feet sitting empty, I'd be really looking for a way to, and I don't, you know, I'm not advocating, you know, the use of cannabis or, you know, I'm not endorsing it. I'm just saying that, you know, you can, you know, there's a lot of, there's people who want to come here and they want to pay, make a lease payment on a piece of property and we're saying, "No." I don't know, just limiting it to 1,000 square feet, you know, I guess we feel like, you know, if you just want to make a point that, okay, we have control of this and it's, you know, we can keep it from, you know, somehow we're going to make a point that we have control, well, that, okay, you've accomplished that, but I'm not sure what else you've accomplished. Now, there's speculation that, okay, well, if all these cannabis operations come in, it's going to scare away other industries, but I'm not sure that I'm hearing that necessarily. If we had a, you know, if we had to place a limit on the number of processing facilities, that would be a nice problem to have, you know? Like, okay, there's too many of them coming in and they're filling up all our industrial areas and so we better reserve something for high-tech R&amp;D and aerospace, you know? That would be, like I said, it would be a great problem to have. We're not to that point yet, and I don't know that it's imminent, you know, an imminent situation that's going to come about, you know? It's just that, maybe, we've tried sort of the conservative approach, but, you know, I'm kind of seeing sort of the social conservatism and, you know, government intervention, and it's kind of like the worst of everything, you know? So, you know, I'm kind of wondering, what do we accomplish by saying, "Okay, we're going to let it go this far, but it's not going to go beyond that point." Okay, so we've demonstrated that we have control of the situation, but what else have we, what else have we really accomplished? So, I'm, that's, I know that this is a little bit rhetorical, you know, but I'm just kind of putting it out there. You know, we've kind of, we've taken the conservative approach. I don't know that any other industry is going to give you all their information on all their revenue and jobs and income levels and, you know, and it's such a fleeting thing. It changes so completely, so quickly. Even the aerospace seems to ebb and flow drastically, you know, from one year to the next. So, I'm just kind of responding to the other commissioners. With all due respect, those are my comments, sort of in response to some of the comments that I've heard.
And I appreciate that, and I guess Allen may be following up with that item since you have been advised by city staff that at least have some sort of limit, but that's not defined here in the staff recommendation. So, maybe that would be helpful to understand a little bit more what, so if it's not all or nothing, if there is sort of a reasonable limit that is being proposed by city staff?
Conversation I had was this afternoon after I sent this memo out to you last week. And so, while we didn't have any, I guess, good planning reason for any specific numbers, it was Laney McMullin, our economic development director's opinion that we would probably want to be really cautious about that. And again, without basing this on any, anything more than just kind of off-the-top-of-the-head discussion, maybe two Tier Ones and maybe three Tier Twos throughout the entire city. Again, that was just a number that was thrown out in conversation. It's not something that is a recommendation, but the thought being that it would, to be fairly conservative and not opening up too much of our industrial inventory for this type of use, and again, trying to reserve the land and buildings for some of the other targeted industries that we're trying to attract.
And that seems somewhat parallel with the limit right now of five retail stores in Everett, and I understand that that might, number might change, but since we're learning about this particular land use, having a little more guidance like that could help us come up with some sort of compromise.
And we can give that some more thought and perhaps have some better recommendations based on a bit more research and inventory information by the next time we put this up for public discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Tisdale?
I think Michelle brings out an important and interesting, do we have per employee, per square foot requirements on any other sector or industry?
We don't have requirements. We have some, I guess, we'll just call them data points that we kind of use for different types of uses, like for office use, we anticipate or we estimate that an office will have one employee for about every 200 to 300 square feet, some more than that, some less than that. Clinics would be probably one employee for, we kind of mirror our parking standards, actually, after some of the employment numbers. The higher the employment and the higher the visitors to a business, the more parking that we require, and those are numerical standards. But some of the industries, it's hard to say in an M1, M2, MM zone whether you have warehousing at one employee for every, you know, 100,000 square feet of building area or if it's manufacturing where you might have one for every 500 square feet of building area. There's a big difference and quite a range.
But there is no set standard that, per square foot, per employee, they have to meet a certain threshold?
No, the only time we've attempted to do that is with the central waterfront plan where the Kimberly-Clark mill had shut down. We did establish a goal of a minimum of 10 jobs per acre of net land area for reuse and redevelopment of that property, but it's a guideline, it's not a minimum density requirement.
And can you discriminate by types of businesses? I mean, forget about this marijuana equation or type of industry.
Well, we do. We do list uses that are permitted, and if they're not listed, then they're not permitted. And so, every now and then, we'll have some use we hadn't thought of, or there's a new use that didn't exist when we wrote our code, and so we have to make an interpretation or do a code amendment if we want to allow that, but...
Is it by the likes being talked about here, by square footage, by employee?
No.
I mean, the reason I'm asking the question is, with more and more automation coming into manufacturing processes, I just want to make sure we're thinking about that as well as these industries come in that are being talked about that are wanted, that we don't, would this set up, if for one sector, zip or sick code or however it's designated, agricultural or whatever, we established it at one per 1,000 or 10 per 1,000 square, would you be able to then, I mean, I know a company that's located in that area that was at 63 employees and now is at 38 through automation? And so, that's really what I'm asking. I just want to make sure if we make this type that we don't put something out there that causes us to go, "Oh, shoot." It sounds like we have the flexibility to...
We don't have any minimum employment density requirements in any of the industrial zones and really, for that matter, any of our other zones. Again, we just have that goal in the central waterfront planning area. We do...
And if we did implement that on this ag industry, it wouldn't have a precedence or set us up so one of those other industries could challenge that?
Hard to imagine that we would have a challenge from another industry cluster if we put some kind of limitation or minimum job density on a specific use like a marijuana production facility. Whether or not that's a good policy, I don't know, but I don't know that we'd have a challenge from others. There may be others who would say that's not our business to try and regulate the number of employees that a business has, but, you know, that's just a philosophical position.
Again, just my example of, you know, they were here and now through automation, they've gone to there. We certainly want, wouldn't want that if this sets a precedence, is, we wouldn't want that to establish us to have to ask those folks that are in that kind of sector that we're talking about, that we are encouraging to have to not then meet that standard. But if I heard you correctly, we could put it on one type of industry, but would not have, that would not have to apply to all industries?
Yeah, I would say that it wouldn't be precedent-setting if you wanted to set a minimum employment density for one type of industry. It'd be unusual. It's not the type of thing that we typically have done when we divide up our land use code into what type of uses are going to be allowed. We try to basically identify and regulate impacts, but not necessarily numbers of employees or people who live in a neighborhood or something like that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sostin and then Commissioner Sand.
Thank you. Just a word to clarify my point. I'm not suggesting that we attach job density to the requirement for these businesses. I'm offering it as a means to compare and contrast the benefit to the city in the long term over what we decide to do with a limited quantity of industrial land. And we have used this as a discussion point, as Allen mentioned, with the Kimberly-Clark property. And the purpose of that was to develop a sense amongst the commissioners and then eventually consensus that we did not want to devote those lands to warehouse facilities, which would sit contiguous to the downtown area and on a viable deep-water marine port. It is not the best and highest use... It is not the best and highest use of the land to have a warehouse facility that employs very few people, relatively speaking, to other types of uses. So it's just a discussion criteria, really. And, um, and that's why I bring it up, because I think it's relevant to how we look at, uh, the pieces of our Everett industrial pie that we have left to dole out in the next 10 to 20 years. Um, and, you know, I'm, it may be an exciting new industry, but I am not particularly impressed with the wages or the hourly wages that have been reported so far. $15 an hour is the new minimum wage for restaurant workers in Seattle. It's, that's a minimum wage. It's not an exemplary wage. It is not the same as...
It will be phased in over seven years.
Right. It will be phased in over seven years, yes, but we're moving towards that, towards that. So that was the only reason I bring it up.
No, thanks for that clear...
Yeah, I don't...
I didn't understand it that way when you first stated it.
Okay.
Where I was going is with these, with what's going on in manufacturing and more and more automation that...
Right. And if it's a robotics...
We went...
If it's a manufacturing facility that's doing a piece for a Boeing airplane and you're employing engineers and, you know, facility people and lots of jobs to support the robotics at family wage jobs, that's one thing. But if you have automation that turns on sprinklers and the lettuce is growing all by itself, lettuce or pot or whatever it is, that's a very different scenario. So I just offer it as that discussion.
Yep. No, it's good.
Commissioner Sand?
It, uh, it appears to me that, um, it's a little too early to move off the conservative approach. I would prefer that we continue on in some fashion, and if that means to make the interim permit, then so be it. Um, and it struck me that the comments from economic development, I'm wondering if the proposals that are in the write-up for tonight have been vetted by the administration? Do they, do these recommendations represent staff recommendations from the planning department or have they gone through the mayor's office? So essentially, the mayor is recommending these changes as well?
No, these are just identified as potential changes. They're not, uh, a recommendation at this time. There, there's things that have been discussed. There are things that have been mentioned by some of the public. Uh, there are things that are not hard and fast recommendations. These are put forward for discussion purposes to see what your thoughts are as a commission and for direction back to staff so that we could bring something forward in a more formal way. It may not be these exact, uh, ideas. These are just some of the things that we've heard in our discussions with the public and commission.
So there are options that have come up in discussion?
Correct.
And if you were to implement those options, this is how you'd do it, by making these changes?
Right. Again, these are preliminary and for purposes of discussion. They're not recommendations.
Is it possible that when this comes before us again, we could have recommendations from the, what I'll call the executive team of the city?
I can raise it up the flagpole to see what interest there is to, uh, how specific they want to get, or they want to leave it to the commission to make recommendations as the citizen body that recommends policy issues to the city council.
Yeah, I understand that part, but I also see that there's a need to identify what's in the best interest of the community. And sometimes we can benefit from reviews and comments from the various department directors of the city that have special expertise.
No, that's, that's a great point, and I can run that through, uh, the mayor's office and fellow department heads and see what type of feedback we'll get from that exercise.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And kind of along the same, um, same track, um, getting further direction from our state legislature, because it sounds as though they've got some, some continued deliberations that might help guide us, particularly if medical marijuana facilities are going to be something that we'll be looking at in the future and just trying to grapple with the whole, um, the whole potential new uses, I think would help me in understanding that. So Commissioner Jordison?
I'm just, I'm just curious on a policy level. I can understand the feedback from an executive team, but if they're, you know, if we're talking about city of Everett employees and staff, I'm, I'm just, I, I, I'm under the impression that the reason we're here is to advise on policy and we're basically volunteer representatives, you know? And so I'm, I'm kind of having a little bit of, uh, sort of, uh, trouble on a, sort of, a conceptual level of let's go back to the city of Everett employees and have them advise us on what we should do. There seems to be a little bit of a, um, you know, basically, the city of Everett, you know, they are, they are the public servants, but we're here to sort of advise on policy. So I'm kind of curious about Commissioner Sand's question. What does the city think, you know, what, what, you know, have the city come back and tell us what, how, you know, they're, they're going to advise us? I can certainly understand how, like, the city attorney would advise us legally, but I'm kind of, uh, I'm having a little bit of, uh, trouble on, on a sort of a conceptual level of what, what you're asking, you know? And maybe...
Yeah, I'm not looking for the administration to tell us what to do. Uh, but I, I do recall back when we talked about the Kimberly-Clark property, when we talked about the Semex property, uh, the issue came up about how the city was going to protect what industrial lands we had, uh, for the right kind of use and development that would be beneficial to the community. And I would be interested in hearing those kind of recommendations, again, as we did before. And it sounds like there was, there was a conversation that the planning director had with the economic development director, but it was kind of this afternoon and maybe we don't get the full benefit of them to be able to look at and come back with a, their analysis or recommendation on it. So I, I think we would benefit from that type of input, because all I've heard since I've been on the planning commission is there's a great concern that we don't, that we somehow protect the industrial manufacturing properties that we have and not convert them over to some other use, because we want to have diversity in this community for industrial wage jobs.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Adams?
I have just a couple of quick questions. First one was from a comment that was made by one of the speakers, and I might have missed this in another discussion, but, uh, it sounds like there's going to be a change on the classification of tier two divert, and two, three from a square footage perspective. Is that something that you're aware of?
What I'm aware of, and Mr. Dowdy, uh, mentioned it, is that the tier one limits that I stated at 2,000, 10,000, and 30,000, uh, square feet respectively for the tier ones and twos and threes have been ratcheted down on an interim basis by the liquor control board as a result of some, and I don't know exactly the reasons, but, uh, they're not giving anybody the authority in a tier two to go up to the full 10,000 square feet and, as an example. And so, uh, I think that's just a, kind of a phased-in conservative approach that they're taking, just, uh, and the reasons I don't know, but, uh, the, as I understand that those may change and allow be, excuse me, loosened up a little bit to get right back to the maxims that are already established by the liquor control board.
And again, I apologize if this came up in another conversation, but as they go back up, do we have clearly defined where they're going back up to, or are we better off planning from a square footage perspective versus using the terms tier two and two, three? I mean, obviously, I think there's comparisons that can be drawn, but as we put terms in our language and they're redefined by the state, do we end up with problems? And maybe someone else knows the answer to this up here.
Uh, I would use the, uh, the larger numbers based upon what the liquor control board has originally established as the limits for tier one, two, and three.
Okay.
Just an interim or temporary...
Kind of the highest level that you could go back to.
Ratchet it down.
Okay. Okay. And then the other, real quick question.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry, if it's on that topic, I was going to move on. The other real quick question is, uh, I appreciate the language that you have on the facades. One of the concerns that we had before was the potential sign that could go on top of, like, the building that's going to be near the freeway potentially, assuming, depending, depending on the regulations and what comes out. Uh, I didn't see signs on top of buildings, but I think you addressed that last time. Can you remind me of, that would be prohibited, right?
Roof signs are prohibited.
Okay, under the code already at this point?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Alan, can you, uh, when we took that tour of that 1,000, um, square foot facility at tier three?
Tier one.
Tier one, excuse me. Um, the gentleman described that, that the canopy was this, but the building had to have X amount around it. So the tier, the built, let's just say it was a 1,000 square foot canopy, but the building was 2,000. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't remember how big the, just so when we're talking, start talking about if we're going to look at the utilization of square footage, a 30,000 square foot canopy, do we know, is that going to take a 40,000 square foot building or a...
Yes, it'll be, uh, the buildings will be larger than 30,000 square feet if they're allowed a 30,000 square foot canopy. It's probably in the neighborhood of around 50% or more additional square, uh, floor area that is used for, you know, other activities, storage, uh, you know, just packaging and, and handling and so forth. It's the, the canopy area is just a physical area where the plants are growing and there's a lot of other use that they need, or a lot of other building space that they need to make use of.
And then the second part of that is if it's a 1,000 square foot canopy and there's, whether it's a 1,000 foot buffer or whatever in between the different grow operations, is it the canopy to canopy or is it the outside of building to outside of building?
Well, currently, there are no separation requirements under the liquor control board or our interim regulations between production or processing facilities. You could have in one building, uh, you could have more than one production or processing facility, as long as they are, you know, truly independent of one another. Uh, the liquor control board has, uh, told us directly that, uh, that would be allowable. They just have to be.
You could have three, three 1,000, or you could have, you could have 10, you'd have to have 30, that wouldn't work very well, but yeah. But you, you could put multiples and still gobble up square footage inside of one building?
Yeah, because there's no limit on the number under the current regulations.
Thank you.
And there's no limit or no separation requirement between them.
Commissioner Holland?
Thank you. Alan, just have a few questions, um, on several different topics, I guess. So has there been any, um, that we know of or any police activity or anything with existing retailers in town? Have we gotten anything from the police? Or could we get something from the police that talked about if there's been any incidences that we should be aware of regarding the existing retailer?
I can, I can get that information for you. When I last asked, there was no, um, direct criminal activities related to the presence of a retail store. There were some, uh, initial complaints with one of the retail stores with neighbors during the construction phase, and, uh, that was aired very thoroughly before the city council, but, uh, since that time, I don't have any new information, but I will make that inquiry with the police department.
Okay, thank you. And then it, it might be helpful, I know that we've gotten a bunch of comments regarding the, uh, to add churches to the 1,000 foot buffer, and I guess I'm curious is if that will, um, just mapping these things in other communities and stuff I see when you start adding these different uses, and I know it was suggested tonight from rehabilitation facilities and all that, but specifically churches, if that 1,000 foot buffer is going to eat up all of the areas that would be allowed for retail or if it's going to, you know, significantly limit it in, uh, whether that would be problematic. Basically, since we got a 2,500 foot separation and then we got a 1,000 foot buffer from adding churches to the list, um, if that's going to eat up all the areas that would be allowed for retail?
We can, uh, to the extent that we can identify, uh, the churches, map those, we'll try and get that done, um, before your next, uh, public meeting on this topic and get that information to you ahead of time.
Okay. And then regarding mapping as well, it sounded like from the testimony we received tonight is that they were requesting to allow the, or add the MS zones to the, um, producer processors, and I'm just curious what areas that would affect to...
Uh, we can get you a map. There are, are very few MS zones there on the, um, bay side of the waterfront, but, uh, we'll get you a map that shows those.
And lastly, just, just a comment, maybe you can, um, and this is regards to the parking situation. We had one of the comments we received, some of the other public testimony was regarding the retailer that opened up on Rucker there and that, you know, everyone's utilizing the parking in the alley, which is adjacent to the retail zones, which enacted council to enact new regulations for the interim regulations for separation and all that. However, uh, I guess I'm curious for the other two locations that I've seen driving around town is we have one on Broadway and then I think there's another one out on Evergreenway, uh, kind of by the car wash there. That one obviously has parking in front. The one on Broadway is all on-street parking. So would this regulation make that a non-conforming use since they have alley parking in the back of that facility just, um, but there, there is on-street parking, there's no designated parking for that actual use except for alley?
Right. That, that building has, uh, non-conforming parking as a retail use for many, many, many years, uh, since going back to the 50s when our code was first adopted. That building has been a retail use over the, uh, all this time with less parking than our code would require today with that additional requirement that council adopted requiring access to the parking to come off the front street and not the alley, uh, if it shares the alley with residential use, which the one on Broadway does, uh, that is non-conforming now with respect to those new regulations that council has adopted.
Okay. Um, and then just my comment regarding, uh, the parking in and of itself is that, you know, as planners, we try to regulate parking to the rear of buildings and all of that, and I consider this retail use similar to any other retail use, and so I would, I guess, not be in support of requiring parking along the, uh, frontage of buildings and in that for this type of use and treating it different than any other retail use, so...
Yeah, that standard does kind of conflict with some of the requirements, design standards that we have in trying to create more pedestrian-oriented, transit-oriented, uh, districts in our major arterial corridors like Broadway and Evergreenway.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Sostin?
Um, I really appreciate the work that went into adding, uh, the conditions for the design element. I think that will help a lot. Um, one thing that I would like to know about is the transparency requirements for windows, which was one of the original complaints that I heard of, um, with regards to, I think, maybe the first retail location, um, that was using a very substandard Mylar film, obviously not professionally applied. Um, and I think I've heard at our other workshops that they, retail locations are required to have obscured windows. So none of the specific items A through, uh, J mention anything about the glass itself or how we would like the glass to look or be treated. And, um, I don't know if the Washington State Liquor Control Board regs specifically speak to that or if it's just make them obscured, end of story, but, um, I'd like them to be attractive and professionally done or, you know, tinted glass in the glass itself so that we don't have spray paint and torn Mylar applique.
Yeah, I think that, uh, what I need to do is, is provide for the commission what the liquor control board standards are for transparency or their... Control Board standards are for transparency, or their standards to prohibit transparency and visibility into the inside of the stores. So we may not have, again, those are kind of conflicting with some of our other design standards, where we're trying to encourage transparency and pedestrian orientation and views into the stores. So it's a challenge, as far as just the quality of workmanship or materials that are used. Take another look at these, and if we can be even more specific and, without writing, you know, a list of prohibited materials, or it's, that's always a challenge. You can create all the standards you want, but a crummy job of implementation defeats the best standards you might, you know, be able to write into a code.
Other comments for tonight? So my understanding is that we'll revisit this topic at a public hearing in May?
Yeah, probably in May, based upon my recollection of our schedule for April. I don't think we're having a meeting in the first, on the first Tuesday of April. I should have checked on that with Dave before I came tonight, but we will have something on the comp plan, I think, in the second meeting of April, or the second, excuse me, the third Tuesday of April. So I've worn you out for the last couple of months, I guess you'll get a little break in April, and probably back at it with a couple of meetings in May, but this would be one of the topics in May.
Okay, Commissioner Adams?
I just have two quick, non-related to agenda items questions that have come up. First one is, I heard a rumor in the community that the port's going to be leasing part of the Kimberly-Clark property. I was wondering if that's come through the planning department at all? And the second one is, I'm getting a lot of questions about when the bridge construction is going to start from North Everett down to below, and I wasn't sure if that had been set yet at this point. I know there was a drilling rig out there that started a lot of commotion in the community recently, so.
As for the first question, I haven't heard anything official about the port and the Kimberly-Clark property. I am aware that there have been some discussions amongst the port and, I think, Kimberly-Clark, but don't know the nature of those discussions. As for the construction of the bridge from Grand Avenue Park over West Marineview Drive down to the waterfront, I believe that's a 2017 construction project. Still have to do quite a bit of design work and so forth before that would get underway. If we're done with the agenda items, and I don't want to rush the commission, if you still want to talk about the last subject, I do have one other item I wanted to talk about briefly.
I think we're ready for that last subject.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, first of all, this is Commissioner Sosson's last meeting, and I wanted to thank Michelle for just being a great commissioner for, what has it been, 10 or 11 years now?
Shy of 10.
And, yeah, you've just been a very thoughtful, diligent planning commissioner. You've always been prepared with all of your agenda items, all packets that we bury you with at times, but beyond that, and just being a very caring citizen, I want to give Michelle kind of a flashback credit here for the downtown plan. It was a meeting in 2005 after the planning commission meeting where Michelle and Cy Newland, one of our commissioners at the time, wanted to have a little conversation with me after the meeting, and suggested that we might take a look at doing a downtown plan within a year. I think we had a plan adopted, and it's been a very well-received and successful plan despite even the hiccups in the economy. And so as, I guess, probably that's the thing I'm going to remember as your most significant contribution among many, was the idea to initiate that downtown planning process. And so I think we also have a little plaque up here that we wanted to present for you. So I'll just do that up here. I've read the planning commission from 2004 to 2015, so, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, thank you. And I guess I'd like to add how much I appreciated Commissioner Sosson's welcoming, and when I came on board, really helping me learn the ropes, so thanks again. Anybody else, we can go around?
I'd like to echo the comments that Alan made. 10 years, okay. I first, I first started working with boards and commissions in 1969, so I think that's 46 years ago, so, and at a staff level. And what I always looked for was those folks that would be willing to step forward and put in the kind of time that you had been putting in, and were so well-prepared and thoughtful in the deliberations and the actions they took. And I have to, you're right at the top. Right at the top.
Those are great comments, it's hard to beat those, and very true. When I joined the commission, you were the chairperson, and I have to tell you that watching you for the two years that you were the chairperson, when I first started, you did a marvelous job leading us. And it's funny that Kimberly-Clark's come up a few times in this meeting, because we had some very contentious meetings down at the train station, that you did a wonderful job dealing with the public and the different points of view on the commission, and leading us through a process. You've always been thoughtful and prepared, and you're exactly right, and so, thank you very much for all your work.
You have a lot of passion, but a gentle hand, and a gentle spirit, and you have a core of iron, which I admire, and it's a very uncommon combination of traits, so, and I enjoyed your mentoring and your guidance as I came in to the planning commission, so thank you for your service, and I look forward to your friendship.
Well, here we go. I just got here. But I would echo, because I do pay attention and always have paid attention to what was going on, and I would have to echo from one of those folks sitting out in the soft chairs, the way you were able to work that Kimberly-Clark, that was a big thing. That was a big thing, and so, thank you for that, and thanks for your contributions.
I will make this brief, but I do have, I take with me a tremendous appreciation for the City of Everett as a community, but the excellent planning staff that we get to work with. Sitting in this chair is not easy, but it is easier than having your everyday life in the planning department, regardless of what the position is, because that pace of life is fast and furious, and so very challenging. So I have great appreciation for Alan and David, both of you, for your teaching and your mentoring me, because when I came on the commission, I had no idea what this was really all about, and the learning curve was meteoric, it really was. So it's been a great 10 years, and I've really learned a lot, a ton, and I appreciate that. And I have enjoyed working with each and every one of you, everybody, not that we always agree with each other, but it's really wonderfully diverse and well-intentioned group, and I really, I know that the city's in good hands with all of you, so, bravo, and thank you.
So what are you going to do?
I have just other interests and other areas of my life that I will pay more attention to than I'm allowed to do now. Nothing much different, really. Yeah, but I hope whoever sits here in my seat, you know, contributes to the discussion and helps all of you out too, whoever that may be. Thank you.
You can always come back.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. All right, so that concludes our meeting for tonight, thank you, yes?
Alan, could, I think kudos need to go out to the traffic planning folks. I was, I was really afraid of Burlington Northern and how we were going to get, I travel on my bicycle and walk and drive Broadway daily, and they need a, I haven't seen any letters to the editor thanking, they, I don't know what you guys, but they've done a bravo, bravo job, it's...
I'll pass that along.
It's, it's, it was done well.
Thank you, I'll make sure the engineering folks who deserve that credit hear your compliments.
Thank you.